Council meeting April the fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Welcome, everybody. Chad, can I ask you to give the indication this time?
Dear Lord, thank you for another beautiful day. Be with all the people here to make the right decisions for the city. Be with all our firefighters, policemen, our paramedics, our troops, and be with each person here and their family for safe travel back home. Thank you for all you do.
What's your point with your latest complaint, Julie?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some changes for the agenda. We have some changes for the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to under number seven, unfinished business, move item I, which is discuss Kennesaw Avenue project changes with Barry Holbert up in front of letter A. So he doesn't have to sit here all night with us and he can get his entire presentation. We would also like to make changes under new business to move letter D above letter A, discuss the new Nelson master plan. We also need to add an executive session before section nine.
Can I get a motion to approve the changes? Give a second.
I'll say it.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the changes? Is that what I just did? Now do I need to give the agenda?
We're good.
You all have a copy of the minutes from the March the Fourth council meeting and also March the seventh special meeting. Could you please get a motion to approve those, the March the Fourth?
I need a motion to approve the March the Fourth council meeting.
I'll say it.
Yes, thank you. Could I get an approval for March the seventh, two thousand and nineteen special meeting?
I need a motion to approve the March seventh minutes.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. Department reports. Miranda's not with us tonight, so we'll move right on into you, Lieutenant Simmons, if you'd give us your Cherokee County approval.
My pleasure. Good month, last month, we had nine total calls for service. Five of those were suspicious vehicles. One was dispatched, the rest of them were self-initiated by whichever deputy. Most of them were in and around the park. We responded to one motor vehicle accident in front of Laurel Lake subdivision. Despite how bad it looked, nobody was seriously injured, which was great. We responded to the theft of a trail for a person down. The resident was found deceased after a long illness. And we responded to eighteen forty Pickens Street where there was a theft of construction material from that home that's being renovated there. This was the second call from that same residence. Other than that, we're just continuing to patrol the city as necessary and kind of keeping an eye on the four-way stop and three-way stop there, too.
You got the second call for that residence theft?
Yes, ma'am.
And the other thing, I know we talked about it last time. Any studies being done? I know we've had quite a few accidents last year along Highway five.
I spoke to our traffic unit who's also been in touch with state DOT. Because that intersection, DOT's got the part that goes up toward five fifteen and the city's got the other part. So it's kind of a, one of the things that DOT's looking at is the time of day seems to be just either dawn or dusk. And they're thinking maybe visibility is an issue. They're looking at putting some lighting there so the people can see it and then re-striping so that it's a little easier to tell that there's two lanes and then where the gore is and that kind of thing. But beyond that, no, we're really not looking at anything else.
Well, that's something. We've had what, four or five right there in the last six months?
Yes.
Some with the town.
Two. Any other questions?
Appreciate it, thank you. Pickens County doesn't have anybody here today, so we'll move on over to the mayor's report. Normally, Kelsey, I mean, there's Kelsey right over there. Miranda would be here to go over our financials and she is out tonight. We sent this out to everyone. And we're going to be having an Easter egg hunt for the city. Way to maybe break the community together a little bit. We're going to partner with the lodges and the churches. Last year, I'm not sure how many we had last year.
I don't remember.
About fifty or sixty kids. So we had a good time. Want to invite everybody to come on out this year with love, community involvement. So the other thing that this is going to do, we're going to try to do this once a month. And it's just going to discuss any highlights for this that's going on in the city. Like this one here had sidewalk improvements, upgraded public spaces, Kennesaw Avenue upgraded, beautification. Which Kennesaw Avenue, for those of you who haven't been here, is our storm drain project that we have ongoing. And it's going to be an extensive one. Mr. Berry's here tonight talking to us about that. Most of you have noticed that we cleaned up and demolished the house down at Spring Street and got rid of some trees down there in preparation for our storm drain project. So we're going to improve some of our sports areas and more. So each month you'll get one of these and they'll give you an update on what's going on. And, you know, obviously it worked because there was a lot of people here tonight, so that's a good thing. We enjoy and welcome community involvement. So that said, do you guys have anything you want to highlight as far as what's going on, you want to talk about the meeting that's going on as far as the bank account?
Just happened to hunt it, it went on Saturday. They'll have surprise baskets for the kids. I think there's going to be four eighty groups. They're going to have hamburgers, hot dogs, stuff like that. Everybody wants to come out, they're welcome.
Yeah, it's not just for kids. I'd like to see the community come out. Yeah, come out, get a hot dog. We're going to have, the council's going to provide cake and we're all going there to serve you guys and just enjoy the fellowship, so. Another thing I wanted to bring up tonight, I didn't want to.
There was a bobcat. We were playing on the bobcat. I think we all knew it was just to make it that way. That it was fixed. We didn't incur the toll in trying to.
So bobcat was fixed, finally. There you go. Yeah, finally fixed. They did come and got the, they come and got the bobcat. It was doing the same thing it had been doing with the blowing the fuses. There were no charges for towings since they had to come back out the second time to get it. And it was a total charge of three hundred and eighty dollars. Want to move on down to unfinished business? So we'd like to welcome Mr. Barry Holbert up with Mathis Engineering to discuss Kennesaw Avenue project.
Hello, I'm Barry Holbert. I'm kind of just going to give an update on maybe some changes for those of you that don't know the project. From Spring and school, there was a pipe that was on Kennesaw Avenue. It's a major pipe. It's basically a box core that the marble company installed decades ago. The city some time ago installed, kind of funneled one of the creek into a small pipe and tried to force a round pipe into the square hole. And they've been having some issues with it. That's the reason that property was flooding years past. So the city kind of kind of called us as a major undertaking to redesign the whole pipe network that's leading up to the box core. So we did that. The pipe was undersized. We sized the pipe appropriately. And we had a bid meeting. And well, so that's, that kind of led to the project. And Mike said, hey, while we're doing the project, it'd be nice to have a sidewalk that's connecting school to Blue Ridge Village. And that is some landscaping features, too, as well. Because the pipe was, the whole project started with a pipe redesign, infrastructure improvement. The power company said that they would move the power lines at no charge, which is a big savings to the city. So that was a real plus. Maybe some utility costs associated with TDS, a line movement, but we should know that here in the next few weeks. So we had a pre-bid meeting last week. Had four contractors show up. We advertised it. And the contractors kind of brought up a good point that it said due to the shoring and due to our black upshore, they're actually going to bench the pipe on the other side and not get too technical. It was probably going to intrude upon Kennesaw Avenue. We're actually going to get in the road a little bit because the pipe is so deep. So the contractor said, well, since you're going to get in the road anyway, you may want to consider instead of trying to force the round pipe into the same old square hole, just go ahead and replace the square pipe. Just extend the whole, a brand-new round pipe underneath Kennesaw Avenue. So that's kind of what we're considering. It's not really a redesign. It's going to be kind of an alternative bid. And hopefully, all four contractors said that would save the city money if they did it that way because it would eliminate one of the junction boxes on the other side. And then the junction box on this side, instead of having to build it on site, because again, they don't make a precast that goes from a square or a round pipe to a square hole. By eliminating that pipe, you could essentially have a precast. And they're saying that would save money. So that's kind of, not to get too technical, but that's the gist of it. That we're going to have an alternative bid. There are things still moving forward as proposed. And we're going to have to bid or do, I think, the first or mid-May. And the construction should start sometime around late May into June. So, quick update, simple change. All four contractors agreed, hopefully it will save the city money. And I was telling Mike earlier, we're redesigning it all except for the old pipe underneath. And it may make more sense, since you're already down there doing it, to go ahead and replace that as well.
You're talking about cutting Kennesaw in two and replacing them? You're talking about another hundred thousand dollars?
More than that.
To turn much of the box cover?
And again, how much was those box covers on the side? Eliminate one. Both contractors said that it would be cheaper to, so we're not saying we're going to do that. We're just saying it's going to be an alternative design. They need to give us a deduct or an add-on. City can choose if they want to implement that design. But they said it's cheaper than the current design. And the reason being is because the box cover on the other side, we're kind of guessing based on the video where it ends. Well, if you're twenty feet down, you've got to bench a two-to-one slope. You're going to be forty feet back. You're going to be in Kennesaw Avenue anyway.
Like they drive sheep, ah, and?
Oh, when you shore it up, you're going to really, that's easy to add in a hundred thousand dollars to shore. Everybody, everybody has to even shore. But, hey, I'm not, I don't necessarily trust all the contractors anymore, but they all agree. So have an alternative design. And they can either subtract it or add it. You don't have to do it. If it makes sense for the city, then you guys can choose to do that.
I just think it'd be a real expensive term, box cover, the pipe end. Have you got the videos of the cover?
I do.
I'd like to see them. Where are they at?
I think I get them back to the city.
I've never seen enough, but I said we got them, but I've never seen one.
Yeah, I've got them. I've got them saved in my files, but I think I gave the dispatch to the city that I can give you the videos. Essentially, it's got, it doesn't tell you a lot about the box covers on the inside as far as the integrity. They kind of look okay. It's kind of, there's some, not necessarily damaged or typical cracks, but they're really just undermining where the water, the round pipe transitions into the square. That's where it's been undermining for years. You can tell the water's going underneath.
Under the box cover?
Underneath the box cover. So the whole lane was, is you've got a flooding issue and then the center later is going to undermine the road under Kennesaw Avenue. Any questions?
When you just look at, when you get the videos?
Yeah, that's it. I mean, if there's not a, it doesn't force the city to change, you think, other than it gives them an alternative design that would basically say, it's either going to cost more or save money.
I mean, we've got a six-inch water mine running through there and everything, I think, don't we?
Yeah. You're going to be into that either way.
They're going to be sheep, ah?
Yeah, you're going to be in that either way. Because it's right on the right of way. I mean, based on the current design and the video, that box core ends right at the edge of pavement.
I don't remember.
Then there's a round pipe that comes out of that on the other side as well. Good.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to bug out.
Moving along, unfinished business. Discuss a vote to merge two bank accounts at Community Bank. And I'll, Kelsey, I'll let you talk to them.
And that's the general, Miranda, question. Basically, she said we can merge the general fund savings and general fund reserve. She said this means you will close that account and we will make that account a system zero just so we don't have so many accounts. Because it was having to do with closing out some of the CDs and stuff and just making sure everything ends up in the right accounts. And so we don't have as many accounts just floating. Because I think there were more accounts than we knew we had. We wanted to close stuff down. But we do have everything closed privately at Regions and everything's been moved to Community, which they've been charging zero fees. And we have been getting interest per being in our accounts instead of penalty fees.
That's right.
And we're still in front of the bank.
So that was just discussing. Any questions on that?
Do we want the vote to do that? Because we either need to vote to consolidate or we have to go open a general fund savings account.
I mean, that's what you recommend?
That's what Miranda.
Let's consolidate.
I'll make a motion to consolidate the two accounts.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. Discuss and vote on outdoor projector package for moving out in the park. We've been talking about this for a while. Kelsey, did you get some of your reading?
Yeah. There's several different options in here. The first one is the one, Mr. Johnson actually looked into some of this stuff for us, thinking across the one that he recommended. I did go ahead and pull several other ones to compare against. So it's not just one. I have it stapled so that it's easier to find them. This one, for the screen size and what you get, actually ended up costing a good bit less. It was the entire package, the screen, the Blu-ray player, the speakers. There was all kinds of stuff, maybe, probably.
It was a complete setup, I believe.
And we were done with it. And the total on that one was twenty-five of ninety-nine, two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine with free shipping. The other ones I found, I'm shooting at it, two thousand twenty-eight. And there was one that was twenty-eight hundred. And I'm trying to look at the screen size. The screen size on all of these, I think, was smaller. Because I think the first one was at sixteen foot. Most of the other, yeah, this was a fifteen foot for that one. This one, the one that was thirty-two hundred, had a nineteen and a half foot, but you're adding on like another seven hundred dollars.
What's the, what is the first one?
And that's the one that, the one that has the picture of the bear on it.
It was sixteen foot.
And for future reference, this will be working so you can see what we're talking about, but we don't have a computer tonight to hook up to.
It's only sixteen foot. Yeah, I was going to say, if you use this one, it's a good size for it.
The advantage of that is that we actually own the equipment. We're not borrowing from somebody else or, you know, relying on someone else to get it here. Let us use it.
We also, section C kind of falls into this, too, because of having to do with the movie fees. So I don't want to combine all that. Yeah, we're going to talk about it. Yeah, we, so the movie fees, we found where it'll cost three movies is nine seventy-five, which is three twenty-five a movie. We'll get some sponsors for those things as well. But that covers us for licensing and everything, so we don't get into any issues. I think it would be a good thing, Ball Ground has stopped doing their movie in the park. I guess it was around licensing and other stuff. I don't know all the details.
But we just need to make sure if we're going to do it with licensing fee, we could purchase that while we purchase it.
So you're able to check in on all that before we?
And what do we have? It's basically, it's normally, Keith has actually helped out with some of that, too. He actually did some middle leg work. Because normally it's three fifty to four twenty-five a movie. But they're running specials that you can do three movies for nine seventy-five and then you can down to three twenty-five a movie. We could also sell soda and chips, stuff that's no food poisoning related. They're not repairing anything. They would offset some of the costs.
Well, that one here was borrowed on it, says, I own three left and stock.
This was in, whenever I printed it down. They have it in. There were other ones, I believe. I did stop by Best Buy and ask if they had a kit and they got some of the kits themselves. He said they will put together a separate package for you, which just sounded like dollar bills ringing up when you're docking them. But it didn't sound like it would have been near that price for what this one was.
So we have two things here. One is the vote on the outdoor package. And then, no, we've already done the legwork, so the movies, this special for those would be nine seventy-five for three movies.
That's nine hundred and seventy-five for?
That's for all three of them, I think.
Yeah, I was planning on getting with Georgia Marble, the Versus Stair, and what's the other one?
The ICG.
The ICG, to see if they would sponsor a movie as well.
What kind of turnout did Ball Ground have on the merger membership?
I don't know. They had a really good turnout. They actually kind of, I think the lodge from here actually did hamburgers and hot dogs, but they had different people that came and did some like snow cones. They did popcorn. They did, you know, there's stuff that council can do. Like we could do popcorn because I have a popcorn machine. It won't have a real?
Or looking at food trucks and stuff, too.
And something like that as well. But I think the lodge said that they would, they'd provide the hot dog and hamburger to small cost. Yes?
I think it was a city that camped in, had about three hundred people that, when we saw they camped.
They camped.
They still have, they're done.
I think it will go along, my personal opinion, I think it'll go along the way. It's a nominal cause to bring the community together. Even if you do it in July and you do, you know, avenue to get free watermelons and stuff like that. We could have the community come out, watch a movie and have watermelons and, you know. Kelsey and I were talking, even if we did the drinks at a dollar a piece, could almost sell enough of the drinks to pay for one movie. You know what I'm saying? So, and that's per, so there's avenues to, for the cost, for the licensing and stuff. We could cover that. Not too concerned about it. But I also think that ICG and Georgia Marble, some of those would be happy to sponsor and sponsor some of that stuff. When I spoke with them last, they were.
How big is this thing?
It comes in a case. I think it was on like the last page of that staple packet.
It's not too, it's not too big.
Everything's supposedly fit in that case. And it had the weight on it. I think it was like thirty pounds or something going for it.
Mm-hmm. That's how it would weigh.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, your screen falls and then of course your blue ground's not big. Your speakers will dumb down and then your?
It would be something we can store and pause it back here.
Yeah, we'll be able to store it here.
That's cleaned out, so we have, there's space back there to put stuff in it. But we were also looking through some of the old books. The city used to do all kinds of things for the residents. Our room displays, it was like a big deal. There was a lot of getting back to the community that has kind of disappeared over the past several years.
I've been looking about this.
Any other questions on it? Do we have? I'm going to be looking to use that up.
And if a movie's not working right, you can just act out.
Just acting out.
So let's go ahead. Can I get a motion to approve the outdoor projector for moving nights?
I'll get a motion to approve that.
Thank you, second. All in favor? Yes, thank you.
We need to make a motion for the fees.
Yes, so discuss and vote on the fees. We're going to attempt to cover it with food, drink, and sponsorship. Can I get a motion to vote on the movies?
I like a motion that we go ahead and approve the movie fees, the special that they have, the three for nine seventy-five. Hope you know we get enough, I have a sole sponsorship to cover the area.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Yes, thank you. Discuss future use or demolition of the Rebecca Lodge.
There's not any information in here about that. It's just something we need to keep on the radar. Because the lady believes, it's Ms. Fay Collins, that had the key. And I don't know all the logistics of the building as far as how the contract was set up. She has called numerous times requesting her key. The building is currently not habitable. It's not safe to use, so we can't give her key back. We told her we'll meet her down there anytime she wants to get stuff out. But we need to start heading our mindset as to what the future use or if we're going to tear it down and put something else there. And I did find some files on it that are in the office with a license section showing it was at least sixty thousand dollars in repairs to get it up to code. I've been told it was close to ninety thousand. And then you have the cost, there would also be incurred to get it up to whatever you're wanting to use it for. And that's a lot of money for us to spend to get something up to code, you know, for hopefully use when you could just about put another building there for that price. So it's not anything to vote on. It's just something to be, keep in the back of your minds to decide where it's going to go.
And I think some of us, when we do the, when we look at the overall recreational plan that we've got, that we've been working on, I think that'll give us an idea, too, because it gives, it opens up an L-shaped area for us to do some stuff. Right now, the basketball court we have is non-inhabitable and can't use it. It's so messed up and, you know, there is no fence there because it would go right down into the water. The court's messed up from trees and, you know, all the root system going underneath it. Not only that, but you've got drainage going underneath it. So as we, as we move forward, it's just, it's just an option to be thinking about that and what we can do with place of it and how we can handle it. So we've got stuff stored in it right now that we would need to do something with. The other thing is, is that we have a contract on it that if we fix it, we've got to honor.
It allows them to have?
It allows them to have unlimited access to it. So that's another issue. So especially with us being liable. If we tear it down and rebuild something else in that area, which I want, I think we've talked about it before, but I think Ball Ground spent around two seventy on their center. If we choose to go back with the community center resorts, ninety thousand dollars. That's, you know, to just fix the, short the walls to the floor, that's a lot. Well, we can build a new building, so just keep that in your mind.
And if you want to look, I don't know what else in the files. I haven't had time to look through them. I was going across them the other day, but?
There's also something, I think, in the files from the Cherokee County. There's also something, I think, in the files from the Cherokee County, where they had, we had to remove it from the park plant. And I believe, I have, I found that it's in there.
Yeah, well, I found two, so I haven't been able to read them all, but I don't know.
We can take a look at that and bring it back up at a different timeline after we go through and look at our park plan. The next thing is to discuss and vote on the MSA with Cherokee County. I don't really wanna vote tonight, but I would like to have some discussion around it. So this is why. I had a good conversation with Jerry Cooper regarding the MSA agreement. This MSA agreement here that Tina was, had pulled was from Waleska. Waleska had alcohol, they had colleges, they had a whole bunch of stuff which the city in Nelson doesn't have. So we need to look at something, and it's like I told Jerry, we need to look at something that's tailored to Nelson. What is Nelson's needs realistically? We don't have an alcohol, you know, we don't sell alcohol, so we don't have an college, we don't have a college, we don't have a lot of businesses. So we need more of a residential agreement with them that covers stuff like animal control, that covers building inspector. And some data that I'd like to put together for you guys would be, how many times have we used a building inspector or code inspector in the last five years? You know, how many, how many rezones have we had in the last five years? And that's some data that I'll get back with you and let you know. This, this agreement here also has a bunch of hidden fees, like attorney fees and things like that, that we really don't have the money for that. You know what I'm saying? We don't, we don't, we're a very small community and our budget's very small. So Jerry Cooper has been very kind with, with regards to working with us on saving, saving us some cost, the cost savings and some dollars here. So I'm gonna, I'd like to go back and have a conversation with him, maybe with a couple of you guys, James, Kelsey, go back and have a conversation with him. I'd like to look at the agreement and what we need. I agree we need some zoning, we need some, we need some code enforcement. But I'd also like code enforcement for the city to be, for the council to pick out heavy hitters in the city, like dilapidated buildings that needed some attention, vehicles that are sitting on blocks and according to our ordinance, they should have tags on them, they should be run. So we have some items that do need some work and we have had some complaints on them. And I don't mind addressing those, but I think that we need to get this municipal, our municipal agreement nailed down before we do that. And that's gonna take a little work. Especially when we talk about it, Pickens County has said that they, they don't have but one marshal. They're not interested in doing an MSA agreement with us.
Said if they add marshals in the future.
If they add marshals in the future. And at that point, we could divide something, but animal control, we definitely need to look at that and we definitely need to look at some of our code enforcement and how to, I mean, we could hold court here, but when you look at the cost of that, even though we have Rick Jones on retainer, the cost of it for providing counsel and, you know, attorneys, things like that, it gets a little pricey for us with no fees back into us. We don't, there's no way that we're gonna make money with that. We don't lose money every time we have court.
Well, they won't allow it from what, if you look between, like, after that first MSA agreement...
No, I mean, if we did our own ordinances, now the MSA agreement, if we do that, no, they wouldn't, you would do for Cherokee County.
Yeah, I mean, I did ask him that, because I know that was something, there were some concerns about, that it's just, it's having to do, and he explained it. That's why I left the email packet in here, so you can see exactly what the question was and what the response was back. I left those in, I do not have ones with Cherokee, I mean, with Pickens family because they were verbal. I talked to Tina Faber, who used to work here, I believe she's the assistant for the marshal. And she had said, more or less, they didn't think they had the manpower. She did suggest we talk to Rod Jones. I called and got ahold of him and that's, and he said that it wasn't anything against the city or it's not, they didn't wanna, you know, be part of it. They just physically do not have the manpower right now to do that.
And I'll be honest with you, what I really don't like is to know that we have ordinances and codes and we can't enforce them and somebody tells me we can't. That really don't make me happy. So yes, I can enforce them and yes, I will, so.
Well, no, I do think, too, and I know all of us have kind of talked off and on at different times, that if we go forward with this, I know there's been concerns that we don't want them just cut loose in here, where they're just going and finding stuff. I think that the city needs to try our diligence soon.
Before you take action, we'll do the opposite.
I think we'll take a couple letters out. And if you're not getting a response in one agreement, then it can be turned over. But it needs to be on an as-needed basis a lot of times.
I think that it can be organized in a way that the council has control of it to review. I think it's an opportunity as well for the council to be able to look at the city and how to make it a better, safer place for all, all of our citizens that live here. So, you know, it'll be a challenge in the beginning, but I think it'll be a, it'll be a good challenge.
Well, you just look at it this way, Nathan. I don't think it has to be enforced.
Well, I think it's just more having the structure there and knowing that it's in place and we need it, that you may have one or two that end up, that the marshals have to deal with, but I think after a couple of them are dealt with...
And see, our dumpster problem, you know, it's a work in real. We just had three loans?
Yeah, they took it, I'm going for the money. I think they, yeah, three total, because it's the last one they picked up. And they dumped it, those, they dumped it Monday. But we just, we need to have something in place, one way or another. Ninety-five percent of the time, you can send a letter and you're gonna get the appropriate response, somebody cleans it up, and that's, that's the end of it. But it's the ones that you send letters and send letters and send more letters and they just send the notice out to you, basically. And it's a service that we really honestly need to provide because it was what the police department handled before. And if we don't have police department in effect to handle that, we have to have our resource to handle it if we can't deal with it with a letter.
I just don't like the county line, but...
I know, and I literally tried every possible way to get that to go.
I don't think it's legal. I don't, I don't see how it can be legal.
I don't know.
To cross our county lines like that.
When I pass that...
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they say that they have the ability to do that, Pickens is willing to allow it, we'd have to look into that more. Obviously, this is a unique circumstance here. And as far as I'm aware, the animal control agreement is a separate agreement from the code enforcement one.
It is.
So you could, you know, choose to move forward on discussing the animal control one and think about code enforcement later. That's also an option because they are two separate agreements. And Jeff agreed that we don't need to vote on anything tonight. As for the animal control, it'd be a matter of whether we need to get, we wanna go forward with it and need to start getting with them to make sure that we've got everything referenced correctly. What Nelson's already adopted is referenced correctly to go forward with that one. So we would work on language just for the animal control one. As far as the code enforcement agreement, it'd just be a matter of kind of narrowing down which things Nelson is interested in pursuing an agreement for versus which things they do not want included in the agreement.
I did have one other question, too. If we go forward with the animal group, the city has adopted the animal control for Cherokee County and the animal control of Pickens County.
Right.
If we go forward with, with an agreement with Cherokee County, do we then need to adopt only the Cherokee animal?
Not necessarily. They'd be, they'd be responsible for enforcing the Cherokee County ordinance throughout Nelson because that's the only one that they have authority to enforce.
Okay, well, they're very similar. There were a few, and I think Pickens was actually stricter.
They're probably based on each other.
Pickens was actually stricter.
Right.
In certain, in good circumstances. I just didn't know if that was something that we needed to do.
It wouldn't, it'd just be the enforcing authorities ordinance, so it would just be based on Cherokee Counties.
So do we wanna table this until we have a conversation with Jerry Cooper?
I see what's what.
I mean, that's my recommendation, but you guys...
Yeah, I didn't think we could actually come to conclusions. I just wanted us to start to narrow it down, but we were even interested in getting a price on.
I wanna make sure it's shut down. Does anybody have any questions, Nathan, David, James, Chad?
Prices on the insurance and stuff that we're gonna have to carry and what the fees is gonna be?
The insurance may be what we already have, because we have a policy through government. It actually just came in and a couple days ago, because I've got it sitting in my inbox here, and I'll go over it, because it does, it's very broad.
We have a general liability policy on them.
And I mean, because it has all the limitation, everything. I've literally flicked through it today, not even knowing that it would apply to this, but I'm pretty sure it would. But if you wanna look through it to see what's in there, just so you know.
Yeah, well, I'll check with them, see if they'll cover the code enforcement under our policies. Probably gonna be a separate option.
Yeah, well, we need, there's a lot of technicalities, I think, that need to be ironed out. It's just a matter of at least getting to the point that we're getting an actual price on stuff to see if we pursue it or not. But I just know there's times that we've run into things lately that there's not a backbone to lean against if somebody repuffs the letter that we sent.
So I'll take an action to get the information together. And we can do a work session to just discuss that and, and work through it as a group. Okay, Miranda's not here to go through the budget stuff, but discussing the date for employee reviews and raises.
Yeah, I just wanted to put a date on the calendar. It's all that, what we had agreed before, voted in, was that any employee raises going to effect July first. So we just need to make sure that we do the employee reviews previous to that, so things are, I might have brought this up before when he was here, to make sure there's a pinpoint. There may actually already be a date on file that I'm overlooking, but...
Employee review, and so we just need to, to set a date to do employee reviews.
And make sure that...
So James, we need to get, we need to, you and I need to sit down and...
It's in March.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid to say. We'll sit down here in the next, we'll get together this week and we'll set a date to sit down with the folks and go over their problems.
Gene, Stephen, and Randy.
Gene, Stephen, and Randy.
Yeah.
We'll do that. I'll set that for this week. We'll do, any, any increase, we'll discuss in executive session after we do our reviews and then it'll be, it'll be added to vote next year, the same as we did on election. All right, discuss and vote on the length of time for qualifying for upcoming council seats. We have two upcoming council seats.
It's section G, but I just put the email in here that they sent us. Apparently, we don't have to pay for the election this year because they were doing this last election. But they wanna know if we want a three-day qualifying event or a full week qualifying. And I believe we only go with a week.
We go with a week.
But that's what I just wanted to make sure that publicly, we were all on the same page.
So do we need to vote if it's gonna remain a week?
I don't think we have to vote, but I mean, because...
Okay.
If you wanna have it on record, you can vote on it, but it's not necessary.
Okay.
Three to five days is the standard.
All right, next up then is going to be discuss training in Savannah. So myself personally, I have requested three classes. I don't know what they are. I'm talking, one is capital improvement, and it's all the changes for 2019. They'll go over all the changes for capital improvement. The other is on budgeting, and the other one, I believe, is HR, and we're required to have an HR, somebody to take an HR class.
Miranda, I also signed up for some. And they're in there, if you wanna see them. I just wanna make sure.
Who signed up for them?
I signed up for some, and Miranda signed up. I signed Miranda up for some. Just wanted to make sure the changes.
And I will get a list of the ones, but it was for the finance stuff that she has to have, she has to have, Miranda has to have.
She gave me a list, I remember.
Thirty hours, so it's fifteen hours a year, I believe it is, is how it's broken down. And for finance, is that, is the part of it for that. So I'll get, I'll get a copy for everybody, but I wanted to make sure that everybody's only up and up and everybody knows. So one of the things that I asked Miranda to put together for us was a training, just to, an Excel spreadsheet with training, what was required. Nathan, you got one coming up next year, so we get that information so you can get a...
She knows, there's two different dates, you can do, it's kind of your shit and send them to me.
But we'll get an Excel spreadsheet. I think everybody else is current, so, and then I'll, you guys can review that as well. Yep, now that we're moving on to new business, so we're gonna, we made an amendment to have our open session next, so this is an open session for the Nelson master plan for parks and rec. Michael, won't you introduce?
Just a second to get set up. Create a show on tell for us.
The drawings that he...
This is Michael Kidd, our landscape planner designer, and who we contacted with to put together a master plan, not for the city, but for the park system. Although that park was left out on the announcement. This isn't quite everything to do with the city. It's only to do with park recreation.
Park recreation.
Specifically, it's to look at the existing major park area that we have to the south of School Street, as well as to the north of School Street, which involves the Rebecca Lodge property and the Twenty-Four Springs Street property. And it does go beyond, and his master plan was completed, it'll go beyond and go up to the half basketball court and some of the other stuff outside of that. But for right at the moment, we're, we're just concentrating on this mainly because there are some real key issues involved with what do we do with the land from Twenty-Four Springs Street, L-shaped that you talked about?
Exactly.
And we, we moved forward, made the assumption that the Rebecca Lodge building is, is gonna be demoed.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that exactly said at this meeting, but that's the assumption that we built, that Michael has built the master plan on.
And again, this is just for discuss. We're kind of landlocked in the city, we know that, but it's a way to build our city up a little bit, get it a corridor. I believe our drainage project will give us a corridor into the city. And then, of course, our master park, this is also in your binder, guys.
I actually have seen the, well, that's true, I did see the photograph, but I wasn't really aware of exactly the two alternatives that Mike has put together. This is gonna be quite interesting, interested to hear the reaction. We, of course, there's an open hearing. Anyone in the public at some point is gonna entertain your questions and answers, hopefully, as well. Michael, are you ready to go?
Yeah, I'm ready. So what I'd like to do tonight is just go over both of these concepts. And then if anybody has any questions tonight, I'm happy to answer those, but I wanna give everybody time to review them. I think you guys have reduced copies in your...
Yeah.
Packet, you can review those. I can probably send a full-size print of each one of these up here if that would be helpful, so that you have something this size to look at. And, you know, this'll be, this'll be a process. This is the first step after talking with Mike and going to the park and looking at things. This is a big part of my business. What I do as a landscape architect is park design. So what I did is, we've got two alternatives here. The first one is looking at very specific improvements that have already been identified, I believe, in the park maintenance plan. And that's what you're seeing here. So these are things like adding shade canopies over the playground, adding a new pavilion, improve, adding some parking spaces, improving the, sorry, let me, let me orient everybody, just to get your bearings. There's not a whole lot of information on this drawing, so this is School Street right here, Kennesaw Avenue, City Hall's up this way. This is the new Springs Street property that the city just purchased with the Rebecca Lodge right here. with the Rebecca Lodge right here, full basketball court right here. Existing kiddie park playground is right here, so that's where we look at adding those shade canopies, as well as some new benches, trash receptacles, maybe some pet waste stations, a new picnic pavilion, with some additional parking on the opposite side of where the existing parking is already. So, right next to the fence in the outfield for the baseball field. And then, looking at some possible, some improvements of that little driveway that comes down to the concession restroom area behind the baseball field, as well as renovations to those structures, some additional concrete sidewalk, essentially paving from, we would look at doing a couple new accessible parking spaces down near the concession restroom building. And then, adding some paved walkways to get from those parking spaces to the bleachers and to the restroom concession building. Those are the main improvements on the existing side of the park, with the addition of possibly doing a little plaza around the flagpole. Kind of dressing that up with some landscaping, making that more of an entrance feature for the park. And then, across the street, I think Barry might already be looking at doing new curb and gutter and sidewalk on School Street to help with a drainage issue in that area. Possibly adding some small street trees along that side, some additional landscaping. And then, depending on what you decide to do with the basketball court, this option right here shows potentially to resurface that and make improvements to the court so that it is usable. We can run through that scenario and figure out what that would cost. You know, you'd have to do a fence and resurface the court, you'd probably give new goals as well. And then, also, the Rebecca Lodge was identified, whether it's going to be torn down or renovated, whatever y'all would do with that facility there. So, these are the very specific improvements that were talked about that, as I understood, have already been previously kind of approved to dress up the park itself. So, the second part of what we did was to kind of take a step back from that and look at the whole property since Spring Street was just recently acquired after all these things had been talked about. I told Mike, this might be a good opportunity to take a look at the whole piece of property combined and think about what the city might actually use this space for. We talked about trying to reach out with a community survey, we're still going to try to get community input. One of the biggest things from a planning and design standpoint that jumps out at me is whether or not the existing baseball field is used very much anymore. Now, in doing this in a lot of different communities, baseball fields used to be that central gathering space for a lot of communities. And they're not so much anymore. And in your case, I'm not sure, I just don't have the data of whether, you know, how often this is used, how often that baseball field is used.
We cut it, rent it out, I think, we had a team that rented it out in March, two days a week. And there's one that's called and asked, but I would love to have these out, but lately, it's just open space, more or less. Families will go down and put their kids there, but it's not used for teams.
So, my speculation, I haven't done the, I haven't looked at the actual dimensions of it. My speculation is that it's not built to any specific tournament standards. There's also, this sideline of that baseball field is actually in the right-of-way of the railroad as well as most of the concession stand and part of the restroom building. So, those are issues, if you start to make improvements to those structures, that can get tricky depending on if there's any sort of agreements already in place with the railroad or how that works. Usually, railroads are not real friendly to deal with, but I don't know what the situation is with this particular.
According to Georgia Marble, my ops and everything over there, Evan says, they just own what the track said something, they does not have no, you know, it was supposed to be sixty-foot right-of-way on either side. They said the railroad coming through the city of Nelson does not have.
The survey that I got from Barry shows a right-of-way, I have no idea. That would be something worth looking into and clarifying. But, anyway, this concept here, the big proposal here is to actually do away with the baseball field and open up the park, because the majority of the park right now is the baseball field. So, if it's not being used very much for baseball, then the majority of your park is not really that accessible. Unless you let people into the ball field to use the park that way and it's, it just doesn't feel as much like a community park that way. So, once you take that away, it opens up this entire space to be used as a community, outdoor community space. So, for things like we just talked about with the movies in the park, this allows you to do some really nice things. So, no specific improvements for what you have existing with the kiddie park. We did look at adding those same parking spaces on the other side. And then, right here where School Street comes into the park, we looked at doing a big entrance plaza for the park itself. So, that would have new landscaping, that would have a paved plaza area, potentially with, what I'm showing here at the conceptual stage is to see, to talk to the marble company and see if we could get a giant boulder of marble to be donated as a centerpiece for that plaza. Sort of a, just a rough sculpture plopped down right in the middle of that plaza to celebrate the history of the marble in this city. So, that, so that the raw marble becomes the centerpiece for the park itself. And then, you could do, you could have this also be a flag plaza as well and do your flags in that same space. So, that sets up as the main entrance for the park itself. And then, where the ball field used to be now becomes a big activity lawn for having city events, your movie night on the green, but also for people to come throw a frisbee or fly a kite, do those things that people do in parks without that ball field being there. This concept shows a walking path, a paved walking path, all the way around that lawn. Typically, what we see in park development is that trails and walking paths are far and away the most popular amenity and the most requested amenity. It's the biggest bang for your buck because it's relatively inexpensive as far as amenities that you can put in a park. And in our experience, almost without exception, if you put in a walking path in a park, people will immediately start using it. So, it gets people into the park and it starts that sort of interaction with the community. So, that walking path becomes an amenity in and of itself. And as you can see, I've got a main loop around the lawn. There's also a loop that comes down that existing driveway to where the concession and restroom building are now, but it simply loops back into the park and would connect down to the existing soft-surface trails that run down through the woods. I'm also showing a couple picnic pavilions. These would be, these could be very simple structures. But picnic pavilions are another very popular amenity in a park. And one of the benefits to the city is that if you have a nice pavilion with a grill and a trash can, you can rent those out. And again, in almost every city that I do this in, their park pavilions are rented the majority of the weekends throughout the year when you have a nice weather, which is most of the year in Georgia. So, that's something to think about as a revenue stream. That's something that all cities ask about and are looking for. How can we kind of help the park be self-sustaining? And that's one way to do that. So, we've got a couple picnic pavilions here around the main lawn. Typically, just from a design standpoint, what you want to do with community spaces is leave the center space open so that it can be used in as many different ways as you want to use it. So, you've got a farmer's market out here, you could have a little festival with vendor booths, you could do your movies on the green, kids can run around and play pickup games or throw frisbees or whatever you want to do. But that lawn area becomes very important, just a simple grass lawn. And that doesn't have, that doesn't mean that you have to come in and put down expensive sod, you've already got grass down there, you just need to keep it mowed. So, fairly simple improvements to this side of the park with the main recommendation being to remove the ball field. Now, if we look across the street with the Rebecca Lodge and basketball property and then the Spring Street property that was just purchased, this is that L that shaped that we're talking about. So, in this proposal, the basketball court would go away from this particular park. And if it's a popular amenity, then we would need to find another home for it. But there are a lot of issues, just from the little bit that I know, associated with that basketball court and mayor, which you talked about a little bit ago. That's a lot of maintenance and upkeep, you're going to have to do some repairs on that retaining wall at some point. You're already talking about needing to do new curb and gutter along School Street for drainage. An alternative would be to remove the court, remove the retaining wall and regrade that slope down to the creek the way it would naturally drain. And then, you don't have to spend the money doing the curb and gutter and the sidewalk on School Street. That's something that I would need to talk about with Barry, but I think that's a very real possibility, that that could be a significant trade-off for the work on School Street. That said, this walking path would come across School Street and would wind its way down the existing vegetation where the creek is. The creek forms the property line right here. And then, this dash line that I'm showing is a twenty-five-foot buffer. The state of Georgia has a twenty-five-foot protective buffer on state waters, which basically means you just can't do anything in that area. You can't cut down trees, you can't build sidewalks, you can't put any structures. If you do, you need to get a permit. So, we typically just show that as being protected vegetation. So, that's, I'm not showing any improvements inside that twenty-five-foot buffer zone. So, the sidewalk would kind of hug the outer edge of that and would wind its way over to where the lodge is currently. What I'm showing now there is a picnic pavilion, a third pavilion, which could potentially be a little bit larger pavilion and a little bit different because it's across the street and sort of on its own. So, this might set up better for private parties and events.
Could a basketball court go in that area?
I'd have to look at the size of it. I mean, a basketball court would certainly fit in this space, absolutely.
Is there room for a basketball court in the kiddie area?
Over here?
Yeah.
No, there's not enough space next to that to fit one in. And basketball courts are tricky in spaces like this because the majority of the people that are coming to the park, it's kind of a conflicting use. Because if you're there to enjoy a picnic or fly a kite or whatever, playing basketball next to you, it's a little distracting. So, something to think about, but like we're talking about, this space here is on the other side of the road.
Yeah, but if we do it, we also have the space up there on Picard Street. So, if we do make that a true half-court, that may suffice as well.
And in the discussion, I talked to Mike about the little kiddie area that's across the marble, about consolidating that with the other kiddie area, why is there two playgrounds?
Mike might be able to speak to that better than I.
One was, the second one was built probably without careful thought. It is really a replication, it serves the same age group. But that was a council decision on what they wanted to do. There were thoughts to putting pavilion up there, there was thoughts to having several different things. One of the things that's sort of missing is the teenager group. We're overloaded on small kids with double kiddie parks, but we don't have, nor do we have the adult, although the walking trail very much speaks to adults for sure. But it's probably not one of the better decisions that I'll leave with that. It wasn't a decision I agree with.
One of the things that we want to do with this plan as we move forward is to look at all those additional spaces, look at all the recreational amenities in the city and talk with you guys about what you want, what you want to keep, what you want to get rid of, what you want to add in. Because we don't want to come in and just assume, I mean, I have no idea what the community really wants to use right now. This is a first, that is the talking point. So, that's when we'll get your feedback as we move forward to start to make those decisions.
Soon as Leo, you're getting rid of everything, if the kids, teenagers, whatever, would want to do that, play ball or whatever, a basketball court, whatever. I know the last time Mike and him figured a master plan on what to do with that park is going to cost the city over eight hundred thousand dollars. And it was told to us that this was, this park here was supposed to fit another group of kids, not the same age group as the other one there, because I was on the council when it come up. And we just had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think Mike and him spent several thousand dollars having a master plan drawn up and all the survey and everything done. So, we had to take what money that was left and put this park here in. But we was told all kinds of different lies, stories about it, just like being told now. Because as far as the community building over here with the Rebecca Lodge, inspectors had went in there and looked at that and never said nothing about the fact that the wall wasn't tied to the floor or nothing. A gentleman that was an inspector down in Hollis Springs, he's a licensed inspector, he'd come up and looked at it, I done work on it, I done everything the man told me to do. As far as I know, the building is safe. And the farm marshal coming, and the farm marshal didn't say nothing against anything that's going on. He said if we turn the doors around, we could put more people in it. And he also told us about the, if we put a stove in there, we'd have to have a bar thing up. But Tina's husband spoke up and said, oh, that'd cost you eighteen thousand dollars. So, then Larry didn't want to put a stove in. So, Larry started trying to change everything. And he's the one who decided to put that wall up out there and added that cost to the Rebecca Lodge. Because that Rebecca Lodge didn't cost that much remodeling. I know, because I've done all the work and didn't charge nothing. And it's got new cabinets and everything in it. Now, but the thing is, you're going to have kids around here, what else are they going to do if they ain't got someplace to play? They're already mischievous on stuff, they bust windows out and everything else around here. They have for years. But that park, the baseball park and everything, has been a part of this community for a long time. And I don't think it will change, just like the Rebecca Lodge. People's rented that Rebecca Lodge for years to have shares, to have benefit shows and whatever. And the people that I talked to would like to see it still go on. I mean, we could have music shows there and everything else if you would fix the building. Otherwise, all that money, just like the money on the marble buildings up here that was tore down, hundred and forty thousand dollars shot up. And to my understanding, the council here promised to build something back up there. I hadn't heard you say nothing about none of that. But in order to use the splosh money, to tear it down, you had to put something back in its place. I don't know what, how Mike's figuring into all this.
It's not Mike, it's me.
Well, I don't know how you figuring into all this and everything, but the people around here, you need to get a lot of input from them.
Well, we will, like I said, this meeting is just to take a look at a master plan of what could be. It's a discussion, it's not a vote.
Well, I was just throwing my two cents worth in.
And I agree.
I was on the council, I know what was said, we was lied to a bunch by the previous mayor. And I appreciate, no, I didn't say the, I said the previous mayor.
Yeah.
Just let him finish his, and then we'll have other comments.
But if you don't mind, if you could go ahead, I mean, I like what you have here, I like the open space. I like the, I like the open space. The baseball field doesn't get used very often. We have, how many people have rented it?
I mean, and I love the history of having it here, but in reality, we have, we're spending money.
Do any kids that play on it? Or maybe a lot?
We have families go out and...
I disagree. And that there's kids playing and families playing on that baseball field all summer long. I don't know if they're paying anything. Who cares? We pay taxes.
The families that go out, the families that have to pay.
And that, but that's, I would say probably four nights at least a week, somebody. We have nothing for kids over eight years old. I mean, there's nothing for them to do here. No wonder why, I mean, he says they'd get in trouble. I don't, I don't know that. But we, we need something for teenage kids, or for kids in middle school. Something for them to do. Take the park away, and you know, the baseball field, they can, they can go play and fly a kite on the baseball field. People play frisbee there. I, I, I don't know. I don't have any kids, so I guess I, I really, I just hate to see the baseball field. And I'm not a local. I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm not here.
I mean, Edmonds Field, Edmonds Field can be, it doesn't have to be a baseball field. It could be Edmonds Field, it could be Edmonds Park. There's, there's a lot of things that, but I mean, you can still incorporate history.
There are families that are there, but most of the time it is with very young children. I mean, I live across the street, so...
I know you do, and I live down the street.
And that's what I'm saying, is we both see them there. And there are families that go in and use it, but it's usually like a mom and dad, they'll bring a couple of little kids out and they'll practice. We've had one team that's rented it this year. They were supposed to rent it all through the summer, they backed out after March. I had a phone call today asking for information. I don't know if they will or not.
So then what about, what about a soccer field? I mean, that's the big thing, now a soccer.
I'm gonna post, and when that's the whole point in this, is just to get input and insight and, you know, with things are being directed at him, that he's, he's just doing drawings to come up.
All I'm saying is, we don't, we don't have nothing for the young people here.
Well, that's why we want you here, is because we want your ideas and your opinions. And I know you had also talked about your concerns with the walking trail.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think you should go around there.
Well, and I didn't see this honestly until we were sitting here, but I remembered you bringing that up.
Yeah.
Walking trails that could be accessed, that he had added on.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And the space, the space is still there to use for families, it's just being reconfigured nicely with a, with a visual treatment to it. But it still has all of the square feet, it looks like nearly all the square feet of the original baseball field is still there.
You still throw the ball there, football, baseball, they're just beating through everything there.
Yeah, one of the things that we, that we try to do in this planning process is, is to, is to make sure that the space can be used in as many different ways as possible. And I know people, you know, you can certainly go about on a baseball field and fly a kite and do all those things. But it would be very difficult to incorporate a walking path around the field as it is now, because of the proximity of that right fence to the train tracks. So this proposal with that fence being gone allows you to do that loop walkway. And I know you can't see the...
No, I understand what you're saying, and that. But I, I would like to see something, the council to consider, this age group between...
Well, we are, we're looking at a half-basketball court up on Pickens Street, expanding that. Right now, it's, it's very small with the fencing is too short. But if we take that area and expand it to a true half-court with the proper fencing, I think that'll be something. We also have the small playground over here, that we can do something different with it. Maybe we might want to, you know, make that something different. I mean, we've got a, we've got a couple of spaces. We don't have enough space to do a sports park, like Canton or some other areas.
One of the things too, is the people that are coming in that want to do baseball stuff, they're ending up at these complexes where there's numerous fields. They have lighting. Our, our, the size of our field, from what I've been told, is not appropriate, like the, for actual use for actual games, which is what we, the trouble we end up running into. And that's why they'll use it for practice, but they don't use it for games.
What is the round circular area there at the top?
Up here? You want to just go ahead and finish this?
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
So this space down here, what we looked at doing was connecting that trail down along the creek. And as you come down that creek, these circles here that we're showing would be like a history walk, to show an interpretation of the history of the marble company and marble. Anything else that you want to incorporate with the history of the city, that creek would be a really nice backdrop for something like that.
Any bridges over there?
Nothing that we've planned in this. Bridges are a little more difficult and more expensive if you're talking about going over a creek. But we do have the ability...
The rest of private property, a cross creek.
So we do have the ability here to bring that walkway down around where they've just put in that new, or where they're about to put in that new pipe at the end of the creek. We can run a walkway across that. And the circular area, what I'm showing right now would be essentially a sort of a nature-based playground, using things like marble and stone and natural materials. So that you've just had this, this interpretive walk of the history of the city, and then you find this sort of little pocket garden with that play area down back behind there. There's a lot of different ways that we could treat this as sort of an unusual space in a park. Typically don't want to have kind of a dead-end space like that. So the trail wraps all the way around so that it's not, you know, it's a continuous loop through the park. But that's a, that's a suggested proposal for this space.
If they were to have the outdoor movie, does it need a stage, and where would that be at, anything?
Good, good question. So what I've planned right now is that the outdoor movie screen would set up here. So there's a little plaza here, and that would hold the screen. And then I'd have to look at the system and see what you would do, what setup the AV equipment would need. But most likely, that would need something out here in the lawn to project out onto the screen. So we'd have to think about power. We'd have to think about if we wanted to do a temporary platform that would come out with the equipment to set that on, or if you, if you would do a little central, sometimes we actually plan that into the lawn area, where you have a little central paved area to house that AV equipment when you bring it out.
Where's the money, do we even have money left over from before to do all this improvement?
Yes. We do. We have a million dollars in backlog.
Oh, okay, so we...
And we have a million thirty for coming.
Okay, so we're not, we're not talking about people's taxes going up for...
No, we're using splosh dollars to give back to the community.
It's like what you mean, money's coming out of our general fund. It's money replicated from splosh that needs to be spent.
That's what I thought, but I just...
That would, yeah, that's a good question. I'm sure that people are thinking the same thing.
And the other thing that we like to do, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, just real quick. The other thing that we like to do with, with plans like this, when we're doing a master plan for the whole park, typically what happens is, all those improvements, in a lot of cases, end up being beyond the budget. So you have to do a phasing plan. So you would do, you would identify, you know, a handful of elements as a phase one that you can handle in this fiscal year, and then additional improvements, you, we'd go through as a back and forth and prioritize what are the most important things to do. So there's still a lot of work left to be done in this whole process, but...
So you don't really have any idea how much overall it costs?
I haven't done a cost estimate on this yet, and the reason I don't do that at this stage, especially when we haven't gotten any community input yet, is because that community input can change the direction.
This is, this is not, nothing to stop...
Yeah, just to discuss.
It's what you could do.
Yes.
I have a question to the council. Is it a recreational improvement, or a leisure improvement of the area? In my mind, I see two different things here. We're doing away with the recreational and trying to improve the leisure. That's what I would like to determination of, what is it actually of the folks?
We've never been that bad before.
I can take a, I can take a stab at that, just because it's...
Well, no, that's your job to produce something. I just would like to know what is the idea behind the council wanting to do this? Recreational leisure?
I don't think it really had a label. It was just an overall improvement for some of the current spaces that aren't being utilized.
I mean, look around, look around at Nelson. Nelson needs a lot, does it not?
But so far, all he's...
I'm just saying, our community...
He's talking about recreational. He's totally discussed doing away with recreational.
You're doing away with a baseball field that not very many families use, and you're opening up a space that families would use for birthday parties, for a lot that, I have grandkids, I would take my grandkids there and have picnics, have, have birthday parties there. I would, I love Nelson.
So you're actually thinking about the leisure and not the recreation? The reason I'm bringing this up...
Walking is recreational, correct? I mean, we've got walking trails.
No, he's talking about doing away with recreational.
No, we have walking trails all the way through there.
He's doing away with a baseball field?
That doesn't get used by the majority of Nelson.
Oh, no, it's not a baseball field, that's not recreational, he's using it for leisure.
So we do, we do have public appearance, we do have public appearance on the agenda. I mean, do you want to write it in?
Well, this is, this is, this is public. I mean, it's a...
The reason I bring this up...
Public appearance on the agenda at a specific point in time. If you want to write it in, you can.
The reason I bring this up is I want to put all this indicator with Glen Lake Park. I lived there. I felt that, I lived here now five years. I felt I could come to a meeting after being here five years and be able to give my opinion. When I first moved here, I was really impressed with this little town in Nelson. You had sidewalks, you had streetlights, you had your own police force, and you even had recycling. And I said, I have found the place I want to live. Of course, in that indicator, I could walk to eat in 50 different restaurants, can't do that here, but everything else was perfect. And the main thing was the taxes were so low, I had to move to Nelson. Okay? I had, there's nothing that's gonna stop me from moving there. But since then, we lost the recycling, we lost the police department, and now I think you're trying to lose the whole concept that they tried to get rid of in Decatur with Glen Lake Park. But the people spoke up when they found out what they were trying to do, and they said, okay, we're not gonna do that to Glen Lake Park. We're gonna expand Glen Lake Park for the recreation that it brought to the community, which was the tennis courts, the thing, the basketball, the things in baseball, the fields, that they wanted for their children, so that they would grow and live and want to be there. And that brings young couples in with kids. I understand this, but I just wanted to give my opinion and think.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Go ahead.
I live closer to that baseball field than anybody in this room.
Except me.
No, I'm probably closer.
You're very right.
I'm retired, and I sit there day in and day out and watch people in the park. The ball field goes unused.
I would love if it was used, but that's...
The ball field goes unused.
You're right.
So you can keep a dead dirt field there if you want to, but if you want recreation, put some exercise stations along the walkway.
That's a good idea.
I got something to add to what he just said. If you go to downtown Ball Ground, you got baseball fields, but you can't use them like just as a public. You can't go out there, you have to be a team or something like that. But what everybody uses is their big old field that they have out there. Huge field, there's nothing in it but grass, and there's a little pavilion there with some, some grills out there. My kids go down there, use that all the time. They got a duck pond. We could have a sewage pond here or something if you wanted to. But, you know, go down there...
That's not for them.
But just a flat grass field like he's talking about up here, walking track around it, I mean, you can throw the baseball, football, frisbee, whatever right there.
We could keep the name of it, so that it keeps the history.
Yeah, and part of the problem is, a lot of people have a sentimental value to some of these things, like the lodge and the baseball field from 50 years ago. Well, you gotta move in time and, you know, improve things and do what the community wants now, not, you know. That's just my two cents.
You have anything else to add?
No.
Well, with that said, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
Good job on the drawing, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I have something to say that's not pertaining to this before we close publicly.
Yes, we have a public, we have a public appearance. That was just for the... Okay. All right. Mr. Frank, I would like to have you come on up at this time. We're going to discuss and vote on the ICA and city resolution with the fire department.
I have a copy of email here in there.
Yeah, I submitted the, good evening, Mayor, and the council. I submitted the inter-agency agreement and resolution.
Yes.
Looking here to not answer any questions that you may have.
Can you explain kind of what you explained to me, so I don't miss words? Because I have the email, I can read it if you do that.
Please, on the resolution?
I'm with the overall...
What you have before you tonight is a resolution and just the update to the inter-agency agreement to provide fire services. Part of the, we've updated the inter-agency agreement, typically fire inspections, fire marshal services, plans review, that's all part of the agreement. We did that recently with Ball Ground to include the inspections. Under state statute, that's a separate part of Title 25. So for you to have the, to take, for us, if you don't have to do the inspections and plans review and stuff, you have to take it on the state, basically. For the population under 45,000, the state's technically responsible to come in, do inspections of public facilities. Over 45,000, you're mandated to have your own fire marshal, fire inspections. But we can't do them without you accepting that responsibility and adopting the COSE sections in there. But you have to issue, adopt that to give us the authority to actually do the inspections where it matters to, in short. We have to do the same thing with Ball Ground. They came to us and wanted us to do the public inspections, and we couldn't do it without them. Tell them the state that we're gonna accept the responsibility to do that.
Tim, could you tell me exactly what you're gonna be handling? Some of that, I apologize, I read this, but I...
I did spell that in, I have to look back at that if you let me find it.
I see it says fire service, fire inspection services, but I'm not sure on what.
All right. Are you under the resolution, not the agreement, inter-agency agreement? Resolution number 2019?
Yeah, that's the one.
If you just look at that back page, I think it summarizes it pretty much. That the city in Nelson will be responsible for enforcing, or contract with enforcement of such fire safety standards within its jurisdictions, and will conduct fire safety inspections on existing buildings and structures, review plans and specifications for proposed buildings and structures, issue building permits when plans are approved, and conduct fire safety inspections of such buildings and structures. See, that says issue permanent intent reservation of occupancy and conduct fire investigations. And that's, that's what the resolution, that's what the state would technically be responsible for, ordinarily with population under 45,000. So to take that from the state, you're, you'd basically be telling them, hey, we're assuming that responsibility, and then in our inter-agency agreement, it contracts that we will do that for you in the fire services agreement. If that makes sense. Trying to keep it simple. I had to get my fire marshal to explain that to me two or three times. We had to do it. We had to do this.
Gotcha.
And Jeff has looked over this.
And also basically indicates that you're adopting the state minimum fire safety standards, whatever the state said, except you're adopting those standards, just life safety code. Lot of popping my head out and handling public businesses you have in, in the city. Now, we do not do the daycare, hospitals, jail facilities, medical facilities, the state still conducts those. Outside of that, public facilities would be what we would, uh, be inspecting for you.
So is that business issues as well? It's already covered in our M S K and our agreement with them.
So there's no extra cost?
There's no extra cost.
That would be part of the inter-agency agreement.
It's really something we have to do, it's not really an option, because it's either that or we have to provide services.
Well, the city of Hollis Friends, they have their own fire inspector. We don't, we don't do theirs, but we provide fire services.
Yeah.
They want to do their own down there, so they hire a fire inspector to, uh, fire, our life safety inspections.
So we can incur costs or we can, not incur costs?
We can incur costs.
I don't want to incur costs.
I didn't think so. I think this is the best for us.
Nathan, you have any questions, I mean, um, David, do you have any questions? No, you go, Jeff, you have any? Chad, you got it?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the, if I need to work everything out, the resolution with the, um, our department. And to accept our emergency services, then we're going to have an intergovernmental agreement between Cherokee County and the city of Nelson.
I'll do them individually since you've got a resolution that hasn't happened before the I D A, we'll just do one to ten.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Oh, favor. You know, it's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the I D A, Cherokee County and city of Nelson.
Can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Oh, but. Yes, thank you, okay, so that's done now, because we follow this.
Do you want a copy of this before you leave or do you want to?
You only need two, two copies, regional copies, and once I get the chairman to sign it on the county side, I will bring one back to you. Need two copies of each. I can come back, you know, I live in that, I drive by here every day.
Okay. We're ready for them tomorrow.
And just another note too, I think the mayor, you'd contacted me about the utilities at the fire station here in town.
Yes.
I think we finally got one hundred percent transferred over.
Good, thank you. We've been trying, we've been trying to do that for a while.
I didn't realize that we did not for a long time.
We were told a couple of years ago that it was already handled.
I didn't realize it was piped across from the, from the maintenance building and fire station. Also, if, if I could be included on your emails, like for that egg hunting stuff, we can arrange for, you know, fire trucks to come in with the guys.
That'd be awesome, take them.
Anytime you have these activities.
Please, and, uh, we'll, we'll make sure we give you, get you added to our list.
Yes, sure. Sorry, I've got a cold, it's hard to speak at the time, so.
We appreciate you coming, appreciate you being here. So discuss a vote on, uh, city of Nelson t-shirts.
No, this was the city property at Hillside.
Oh, sorry about that, I'm off one because we moved everything up. So discuss and vote on, uh, future use of property located at Hill, Hillside and Pickens Street.
Do you think the A to B, there's a couple of.
We can cover this tonight, um, in our parks and recreation, but it, but we are looking at this in our overall, um, capital improvement plan. Um, I, I try to do, um, drive-bys on Pickens Street every other day. Just looking, looking at that park and stuff, seeing who's using it, it is being used. So, the best, the basketball field is being used, um, I think it's a good opportunity, um, since our basketball field down here is, or our basketball court down here is, um, really, you can't use it. I think it's a good opportunity to look at maybe making that a true half-court and putting new fencing around it and, and fixing that area up there, since it is used.
There are currently driveways that run through it, which is kind of on record.
May I say something on that?
Yes.
I want to raise this, and, um, Conjard Memorial sold us that church, they told us we could use that property right there for the parking space as long as we have church there. And sometime we have big crowds, you, y'all know. And, and that's the only place they have a park.
We're not going to, the basketball court wouldn't take up that much room, but the length, it would, it would go in lengthways this way, and then we're talking about putting, um, parking spaces on the, on the other side there towards your church, so you would still be able to park there.
We just figured it would be a good time too, because there's driveways that run through there and there's not that much.
Right now, it's just a, it's just a dirt, you know, it's just a dirt, then we'd like to resurface it, make it look nice up there, you know?
Yeah.
You know? So, and, and of course, expand it so the kids would have an area to play. Fence is too low right now, the court's real small, if we did a true half-court, it would, um, it would enhance that area, so. And just make it look a little bit, but I do understand your concerns that you're, you know, right there at that church. Yes.
Would it be more feasible to do away with the kiddie park next to the old, uh, Marble Mill? Build a nice basketball court there, you've got better parking, you've got better sight distance. I think it would be a safer, safer place overall, than up there on that hill.
Something we can look at. Okay, thank you for your input there. So, in doing that, one of the things that came up, um, is that we would need to, um, right now, we've got people that live there and there's, they, they drive through there. So, we were looking at, um, closing that off and using it as city space, putting the parking spots there, expanding the basketball court. And if we did that, then we would need a, those folks would have to have a driveway, everybody else has one, it's just the only, that, that one there seems to be the only one where you're going, you have cars driving through there to get to houses, and there's two parcels right there, and you've got kids playing there, that's all liability to us. Um, you know, kids I saw playing up there is probably eight, nine years old, some of them are older, but there's, there's some that's young, so.
I know one of those parcels up there just sold, it was, I think, Mr. Johnson that purchased it, and he had said that he, his intent was to go ahead and connect to, what is that, Hillside? Anyway, so we just figured if it was.
He's going to put a parking, I mean, he's going to put a driveway in for his, for his pigs anyway that connects to that park.
That stays on his property lines and doesn't run through ours, we just wanted, I guess, to make it more official that we do, at some point in the future, intend to do something with it, and if we can go ahead and have the driveways off, when he's planning on doing it anyway, it was, kind of covers all the bases. Especially since there isn't an easement on records that'd be from previous times.
I'll go ahead and do it there.
I think it's the best time to do it, especially if he's planning on moving this thing anyway, that way it's just on record that we do future plans. And use some liability risk.
Will this come out of park from wrecks or?
Um, it will, um, like I said, we've not, we're not completely finished with that, we've been, we've been trying to work on our corridor coming in right now because of social mess, but looking at how to make that look a little bit better. But we haven't, we, we have looked at it, we've spoken with Miranda about what, what we've got available to do that. We've got to get some cost estimates to expand the basketball court up there, and also, um, parking spaces. But if that, essentially that area that right now that's just a dirt area would just be, it's named gravel anymore, it's just dirt.
We need to pay the whole thing.
It does need to be paid and, and, you know, look nicer.
Yeah, actually, they, I did a survey on the property, the city would gain, well, gain in the sense of usage, probably another twenty feet, twenty, twenty-five feet, bigger area.
Yeah, I have a complete one here, they just have the highlighted area of it. Because right now where the driveways run through, you can't really use that because it's being, it's a driveway.
Since you're here, what, what do you plan on cutting your driveway in?
Uh, probably six months, but I could treat down in six months.
Okay, so we've got some time, so there, there's really nothing to vote on right now, council, we're looking at our capital improvement plan, so whenever you're ready to cut that through, we're not going to cut off that excess.
Right, I did speak to the, the other property next door, they were open to doing the same thing.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'm just, that's a good time to start talking about it, since he's planning on doing it anyway, that way it's just on record that, that way we can, we don't have the liability anymore.
Okay, next is to, um, next on our list is to discuss and vote on, on the city of Nelson t-shirts.
There's nothing in here about that, because I shouldn't put that, I should just say discuss. But it's been brought up a couple of times about having t-shirts printed to have the city logo on it and selling it. When we have events or whatever, just to kind of give us money to put tourism on a museum. I had a friend of mine, and I just had her giving some rough estimates, and they went from, I think it was like eleven to thirteen, you know, offhand for better brands that weren't like white t-shirts with Hanes tag on them. But something that somebody would actually wear, it's like if you're going to spend twenty bucks on a t-shirt. You know, and that was, I've only checked with one, but it was just something that kind of fit on the radar, you know, for the future, and a good time for that, could you even go towards the New Haven Park or whatever?
Or, or the museum, we could have, go to work on the museum, I know we've got some things that we need to, some frames that need to be fixed and stuff like that now that the city's, um, back and working on some of this stuff.
Lamar Kellis' wife was here too today, doing the same.
Okay, well, good deal.
That was just something to be thinking about, I'll try to get some places and stuff if it's on, want to consider.
What's your thoughts on it? At the Marble Museum, when we have the, um, when we open at the Marble Museum for the folks in the fall, we sold, James and I found some t-shirts, we sold all we had. We did, we said, people bought them like that was, yeah, so, yeah, they went pretty quick.
I think they normally would do something to that, but that's why we could have them out where it wasn't just for that event, like we could have them down here, but that, it's something we have to decide where the proceeds go. Ahead of time, so it's not money kind of randomly floating around, we have an allocated place that they go.
And we're not talking about a lot, maybe, maybe, um, trying to get a design together and do it maybe, um, twenty-five.
I don't have no problems with it. I don't need one.
We'll talk about what we want on it, some prices on it, and go from there.
So we'll bring that back up, we'll bring it back up, getting out and you get time. Again, um, the budget for twenty-twenty, Miranda could not be here.
There is some check down papers over for E, she did a, um, a budget calendar, the first thing that's on there, and then the, the current, I could state what expenditures were there, back behind the city government expenditures.
She's going to put together, um, I spoke with her, she's going to put together a rough draft for you guys, and I'm gonna, um, I'll get it printed off, um, this week, and I'll get it, I'll get you guys to come by and just pick a copy up if that's okay. And then we'll have our, um, I think we've come over here and run on that, we're planning on doing that next, that are maybe.
Maybe twenty-third for public here.
Yeah, and if, if need be, we, we can always, I can throw a work session in there just to go over the budget, in lieu of what happened last year, I think that would be a smart thing to do, so everybody's comfortable with it. Are you guys comfortable with that, I mean, do a, maybe a thirty-five, a thirty to forty-five minute work session to go over the budget?
A big time.
Okay. Go ahead and set that up. Um, probably from, in the next, I'll, I'll get with Miranda and get a timeframe from her, then we'll get with everybody and back into it. It'll just be a discussion on, on that. All right, now, can I get a motion to, um, go into a second discussion? No, leave a second. I'll favor. No, thank you. Can I get a second? Slides us to public appearance, anybody got anything that they want to bring up, Mr. Kellin? Welcome, sir.
Happy to be here, happy to see so many, uh, Nelson residents here. I've been here way too many times where, must be in doubt, that we were at, except for the council. I was even here before I had to take our glasses and read my notes. Okay, um, I'll go back and just give, uh, a brief tidbit concerning the park. I have respect for history and I have respect for, uh, times change. And I want to give you one example that occurred in the county, which is forty miles from here in Guanetta, which is not that far. In Norcos, I don't know where people in here know, but in Norcos, Georgia.
I do.
But it, it is across the Chattahoochee River, borders along Chattahoochee River, and they have had, uh, as many as three or four major league baseball players come from that town. Here about ten or fifteen years, particularly when the splosh became available, a lot of new ideas started coming up, just like we can hear, hear tonight. And the city baseball field was hallowed ground sacred. I mean, you didn't touch that. Until it was shown in somewhat the same fashion that we went through tonight, where towns have changed and the needs of the city have changed, needs of the residents. And they converted the hallowed ground baseball field to a very similar concept we have, which had a paved walking trail around pretty much the perimeter, where people who could not get out on a, uh, rough natured trail and walk, or, young mothers and fathers with strollers, they had an area they could go and walk on. So, things like that seem to be evolving into something that would be beneficial, uh, to Nelson, because, uh, these locations go through cycles. Like, when I moved to Laurel Lake, I was the youngest guy on the block. And they're, they're very grandchildren people that I was very friendly with when I first came here, now they have grandchildren up and down. So, anyway, that's something I would ask you to look at and think about when you get, uh, emotional about the, you know, the historical things where things I used to do enjoy. So, but I think we're making some headway into coming up with something that would better meet the needs of the current generation of people. And sometimes you have to give up something to get something.
No, Mike and I talked, we were talking about, what's something that, that older people could use, we've got a lot of older people.
Right.
What could, what is something older people could benefit from?
Tens.
You know, they're tired of walking and, and not being able to walk on, on the, the soft trails.
Right.
So, uh, walking would be something that they could do, and then of course, family space, um, along like that would, you could have family space there, so.
Yeah, some of the, uh, more simple games that are now where they toss the bean bag.
Yep.
Rack up the scores, uh, things like that, you know, seniors can do that.
Exactly.
Okay, let me raise a couple of other questions that bring things to mind for me, from what I've heard tonight. I would like for the city to ask our attorney, if that's what it takes, to do just a little bit of research to answer the question, what is the railroad right-of-way through Nelson? Because when we start talking about things that could be affected by the right-of-way, James has heard the Marble Company's input, and I've seen it different on drawings, part of the town does have a different right-of-way than other parts of the town.
Right.
And I agree that tracks through the Marble, uh, company, uh, operation is just tracks, but most of the other area is shown as wider, which does take in a portion of our, uh, baseball field restrooms and along that area. So, I think it would be good if, once and for all, we could answer that question.
Okay, noted.
Can I, can I add something to what he says real quick? Don't want to interrupt him.
Yeah, go ahead, I need some more.
City of Ball Ground, there's a lot of that stuff, same thing, and City of Ball Ground actually leases the railroad property from them, and have like a ten-year lease or whatever, so they can still use it. So you might want to talk to City of Ball Ground about who they talk to, because the railroad just sold about a year ago, it's new guy and everything, but if it is on their property, you might want to talk to them about leasing it and putting permanent structures on it and everything else.
Next question is concerning the utilization of the area up around the half basketball court. We've got a, a place up there with a huge water tank that may or may not still be in operation, I don't know.
It's still in operation.
It's still in operation.
Marble Company has a lease on it.
Yeah, we leased it to the Marble Company.
Is that a revenue generator, or is it just a grass?
Well, we've already been paid a dollar for it. Don't ask.
It was literally a dollar, I think, for how many years, it was something ridiculous.
Hundred years.
Yeah. But evidence, if there's any problems with it, that's who we end up calling to deal with it.
But it's, uh, looks to be like there's a possibility there of, of, since the city owns that property where that tank is located, that you could utilize all of the land right up to, within a reasonable amount of feet of that tank, if you needed to get more space, like the lady brought up. Leave us as much parking as you can. But if we had to go in there and excavate some of that, to, and build a nice wall retention wall, to enlarge the half court area, seems like a feasible thing to do.
Yeah, it's probably another thirty feet back to the water tank on the fence.
You could use that dirt to fill in somewhere, to fill.
Can I add something to that right quick?
Yeah.
Since you're willing to do all this to beautify the city, now, maybe approach the Marble Company about at least painting the tank and making it look nicer.
Thanks, Sylvia, I thought you said something about that.
And fixing the holes when it poured out water.
That's like a little water feature, like you just stand there.
Right, right on the electrical meter too, it's awesome.
Make sure you touch the electrical box up.
I tried to go shower, my weekly shower was one of them.
Yeah, actually, um, I, I, um, John Burke and I are, are, I've known John and his family for a while time, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I'm gonna get with, I'm gonna get with, I'm gonna get him and just, I'm gonna ask him, um, you know.
Get a wall of all that.
Painting and stuff, yeah, I mean, you know, that'd be a nice focal point for the city, if we could do some type of, an art on that tank, you know, and keep it, I mean, you want to, it ain't going anywhere. Keep it, it'd be nice, it'd be a nice spot there.
Coming out, I'm glad you're begging on.
Well, you know, you know, they, all, all over the place, you see people, what do they call it, um, they, they go in and they, they do murals on different things. Literally, wrap the tank in like a mural. So, you'd have to make sure it was like eight foot up, so you didn't have anybody destroying the, you know.
Meanwhile, back at Lamar.
Yeah.
We're gonna give you an extra minute and a half, don't worry.
Took the opportunity to talk with Mr. Prather, while you were in the executive session. And I, I tried in my mind to get a better concept of why we have such a fine, workable system with the fire department, which encompasses all of Nelson. But we can't ever figure out how to do that with anything else. We can't figure out how to do it with animal control, code enforcement, to have it under an umbrella of somebody who's capable.
The, the MSA, if we can't find unit, would cover the entire city. The way it's with Cherokee, that it would cover the Pickens side and Cherokee, that we're just trying to fine tune to make sure that, I mean, I know there's points that I brought up of concern, to make sure the Pickens residents are not in the problem, that there is something on the table that would cover, um, both sides.
This, this is for, essentially, whatever services we need, whether it be Cherokee County or whoever can provide those services.
Yes.
Which right now, it's on the Cherokee that really has capabilities for what we need.
Well, not only that, but we don't want to adopt somebody else's plan. Nelson is not Alaska, Nelson's not Ball Ground, Nelson's Nelson, so we need a, we need a Nelson MSA.
I agree, but we can't use that to just keep dragging it out and never getting there.
We actually made a lot of progress, it's just kind of behind the scenes progress the past month.
That's good.
We've actually all been in conversation too, not more than two or three at a time, it's just been a phone call here and there, and just talking it through, so if there are discussion points or, you know, points of concern, we're addressing those before they're brought up.
And I had a meeting with, with Jerry, and, and the thing about it is, is we don't have a Alaska budget, we don't have a Ball Ground budget. We don't have, we don't have that kind of money, so eleven thousand dollars is not feasible for them to provide a couple of services for us, right? So we, we talked with, with Jerry, and he says, I really just want you to have some skin in the game, you know, he wants us to have some skin in there, so I'm good with that. And I hadn't planned on really doing anything until July, because I want, um, it'll be in our budget. We have to budget for it, so it'll go into our budget, and it'll start after, after the council decides exactly what it is we need, and hopefully, that'll be before July, and then it'll be budgeted for, and we'll start something shortly after. So, I agree, it has been, it's been a long time coming. There's been a lot of legwork done by Kelsey, there was a lot of legwork done by myself, by Mike, we've mended and, I believe, relationships there, and come a long way to making some things happen for the city at a, at a substantial cost saving, so.
I'm looking forward to, uh, when we actually have these agreements signed, sealed, and delivered and functional.
Understood.
My last two little simple items, uh, which, I'm gonna keep asking about this, till something happens. What is the plan for the road striping on, on Kent Highway?
That was the county road, right? And that's the one we had just talked about?
It's not the county road.
We had just talked about it.
Because it was the...
No, it's our.
No, it's our road, it's the one right up here on Valley Five.
It needs to be resurfaced towards your, but it needs to be.
It needs to be resurfaced too.
Well, that, that's a big project, just getting it where it's not dangerous, would be a fairly quick fix.
Because we need to look into, kind of, cost and stuff.
The striping wasn't on me that much, was it, we talked about it?
I would have told you, I haven't answered you though.
I'm sorry, I've been sick.
I can't remember who we used to turn.
Well, we got a couple of, we got a couple of other people, we've got one name to Ball Ground, we got some quotes, we just need to...
Got some quotes from the county.
Yeah, we got some quotes from the county. We'll, we'll be discussing it in a minute, I'm back in a minute.
It ain't the last time they used the brush on it, and they'll color it paint. Been hard about that ever since it's put down.
Whatever it was, don't use that person.
That's right, you can't see it.
Okay, last one, this is another follow-up, pothole at the end of Kent Highway and, uh, Blue Ridge, still there?
There's three.
Still there?
There's three still there.
Well, my, my question was, what is the progress, and what is the schedule, and do you have one?
Well, we both gonna fix it, but it started raining, and I guess we can fix it now, because it's wet.
Well, maybe, well, maybe.
Maybe.
Better be a four next week.
Maybe not, but we can see if it's done. Yeah, I know you have to dry out first, so I don't want to try.
They gave ours epic quits.
Or maybe we just get another one.
Maybe at the counter, if somebody come down and ask for things out there, no good, it's, that's gonna be dangerous.
In, in conclusion, uh, you, you know, sometimes you hear of the word of the day, it is, whatever. Now that election season's coming and whatever, I would like to be sure that everybody knows what sworn duty means. Sworn duty. That means you're sworn in to be a public official, and you have a duty to act. Except the sentence, sworn duty. So, everybody think about that, and see how we're doing and how are we gonna be doing in the future.
Thanks, Bill Martin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any free comments? Anybody outside of them?
My name's Jimmy Fiz, I live at thirteen thirty-eight Pickens Street. First, I want to commend the mayor and this council for the job they're doing. For the first time in a long time, I have faith in this mayor and council that y'all can work together and do things in an orderly fashion.
We've knocked them blows yet.
I'll put it this way, I'm, I'm proud to tell people I live in Nelson, again, I used to tell them I just live on the Ball Ground. I know y'all are in the process of fixing, uh, drainage issues. I have one that I would like for you to put on your list to look at possibly, is at the corner of Pickens and Hillside Road. Basically, all the water from Blue Ridge on Pickens up to the top of the hill at the old water tank, comes down to one cross drain that comes under Pickens on the north side of Hillside. Drains down my side yard, and goes down through my, middle of my backyard. There is pipe so far down, and right now, it's probably a quarter to half full of dirt.
So the drains need to be cleaned out, or you want it like a new, well, I'm asking because if it's stuff that we have, we can have ready to clean it out, but...
Well, but since the sidewalks are put in, there's a lot more silt, because it doesn't displace the natural ditches like it used to.
Yeah.
But, uh, a good rain.
Sure, I'm pressing thirteen thirty-eight.
Thirteen thirty-eight.
They used to wash that out for the water over there in the park, but...
I, I don't know.
On Pickens Street.
But I, I noticed this past weekend, the pipe on the lower side of my driveway is about half full. It's a corrugated pipe.
Yeah, I have Ricky doing a assessment on it, and if anything, we'll take for this last one.
But at that point, the water comes out and goes to the center of my backyard. It shouldn't go that way. There's actually a cross drain on Hillside in the curve, the pipes on the wrong side go into that cross drain. It doesn't really catching the water at all on Hillside. Y'all would just, uh, look at that, see what we left at that place?
Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. You guys have to have anything?
Might add one seventy-two-four Pickens Street. I had two things I wanted to, uh, kind of give the council and public a, sort of, accomplishments update report, specifically about, uh, the capital improvements program, and then also, much, you'd be happier, so we're gonna talk a little bit about stormwater. And in fact, I have a report I want to share with you, give you some background. As a result of a meeting that the mayor and I had with Jerry Cooper, a long time ago, when was that? Was that a year ago? When in our, they were? We, uh, have really accomplished a whole series of projects that kind of came out of the conversation of that lunch, largely around, uh, things that we could integrate our capital improvement program in relationship to the Cherokee County. And Jerry Cooper was very, uh, very welcoming to, to the mayor, and, and extended a, an opportunity to develop a whole series of different projects. So I have a list of them, and they're included in our capital improvement program, most of them are. One was road paving, uh, and, uh, they've come out and done an audit, a survey of all of our roads, which we've never done before, and then they, uh, did an evaluation and a ranking system of good, bad, very good, poor. And then we've taken the worst, most biggest offenders, and integrated those into our capital improvement program over the next few years, using the S-SPLOST money, money. Storm drain, met with them on that, and what they've done is a very similar thing. They interviewed, interviewed, surveyed the entire cities, all of the storm drain systems, and unlike before, we never knew where the pipes were, how big the pipes were, what's working and what's not, and an evaluation. And they have prepared, and I'm gonna get to that later, uh, the storm drain, I have the beginning parts of the storm drain presentation to give to you tonight. It's not done, it's about eighty-five percent done, uh, and it was done at no cost to us. I don't know what a consultant would charge, but it wouldn't have been free, uh, this one was. Third thing was construction and sidewalks, and, uh, there is a very, very good possibility of a partnership with Cherokee County in, in doing sidewalks on Old Nelson Road, where there's a section of about a hundred and forty feet that's in the, in Cherokee County, not in the city. But we want to extend it all the way through, and so I've been in discussion with them around them taking the initiative to do the design work, to do the actual construction.
Is that near the stair place?
I'm sorry?
Is that near the stair place?
Yeah, and, and all the way to Jordan.
Yeah, I walk the dogs through there.
Department of Jordan isn't in the county, but it makes sense to tie, and we've worked with them in the past when we've done locating, and we've done, uh, Old Nelson part with them. Also had discussions with Cherokee County on their GIS, which is their mapping and information systems that the city, county is a very sophisticated system, and we have a very non-existent, unsophisticated system, we don't have it. It's a, a great opportunity for the city to, like, map our storm drains, map our streets, do our zoning maps, all the kinds of things that all the other cities in Cherokee Counties do, by, if we can take advantage of their GIS system, to bring us up into the speed with the normal cities. Talked with their building inspection people, talked with their planning people, uh, done some stuff on mapping already. And then finally, then this isn't really directly tied to Cherokee County, with, is the Parks Master Plan that was discussed this evening, I'm not sure what kind of rating it gets, but, uh, we got a lot of people here, and we certainly had a lot of, a lot of discussion. And, uh, my goal is to have a master plan for the park system for the city, to have a master plan for the storm drain system for the city, and sideways, a, a master plan for maintenance of the road system for the city. Those are some real significant changes that, uh, have just come to pass, and are currently working. All of those pieces except the Parks Master Plan, uh, well, roads, storm drain, and sidewalk are now being drafted into a MOU, or MO, MOA, memorandum of agreement with the county. And, uh, I sent copies to Kelsey, and to the mayor, and to Miranda for review, and we'll, they will take it and pass it on to the county's attorney and see if it goes some, somewhere. What we're doing there is, is instead of doing the bigger, you know, governmental agreement, we're just taking a little piece. we're just taking a little piece. And this is the first time, and Jerry Cooper gave us the opportunity to say, "We'll, I'll help you, we've paved your roads and you just have to, we'll give you them at our cost."
It was a substantial savings from what was on there before.
Yeah, and it's like three hundred thousand dollars worth of savings. Thank you. But we haven't actually done it yet and it's not exactly as easy as you think.
Yeah.
And so, that's the part where, so we're just taking a little bite and see if we can figure out the logistics of how to go about doing it. Having said that, the other part is, that I wanted to suggest today is that the capital improvement program for 2019 is done. The final document should be as a handout at the next council meeting. And in the essence of my assignment given me from the mayor and from council was to complete the capital improvement program with a focus on addressing the critical areas of the city's non-performance. That would be over one point two million dollars of unspent SPOS funds. So, we, as the mayor said earlier, not only have a million sitting in the bank and we're already into the next program, which is affording us another six years of a million dollars and we need to get our act together here.
We need to get to spending.
Yeah, boy, we're not going to get it if we don't.
So...
I think that, I really think that we've got a good plan about it.
Yeah, and the capital improvement program gives you a roadmap to get that done and that's really what I'm kind of delivering to you, I guess.
And a lot of that stuff has already been voted on, so it's just been, it's been revamped, which you'll see, we're going to give you a draft. Anything that you don't like during that draft, you can, we'll review and we can move or shift or whatever we need to, so, but I mean, we've reworked and a lot of work has gone into it and that document will have to be sent to the, sent back to the state because, is that the one we weren't complying in?
No, we're, we're good.
We're good now?
Yeah, we're, we're good.
But we weren't compliant?
Yeah.
Okay, we are compliant now, so everything's been followed with the state, so we're good.
Our order does that for us. The capital improvement thing is a little bit complicated, sometimes it was very complicated, but we've gone through the auditor, we've got blessing of the definition of what we can spend and what we can't do. We've divided up the two counties because we have two different sources of revenue from the SPOS money. But there's going to be a bunch of ongoing issues, we've got to redefine what we do with Pickens County. There's several undefined issues, but having completed my valuable, my volunteer assignment for the completion of the document, that being done, I am now formally announcing my Nelson volunteer retirement. Looking at the conclusion of that document being my point of departure, because this is non-ending, I can see that, and I told the mayor, "I won't do this forever, I'm happy to help, but it doesn't go forever."
You've done a great job, I appreciate it, yes.
In summary, what we're leaving behind, I feel very good about, some really, really good management tools, a roadmap on how to move forward with the capital improvement program, the opportunity to advance Nelson, raise the bar a little bit, let's get into the GIS, let's have all our roads paved, let's go after all of the drainage issues in the city. And the door is cracked open a little bit with the county to use the resources and the economy of scale things that they just offered, as a small city, we just aren't in a position to play in. I don't know where that's going to go, I'm doing my best to at least do a little trial run, do this MOU and the mayor I'm sure will be sharing it with you. Nothing will do, we won't do anything without council, well, we'll do nothing without council's approval and without Cherokee County's approval, so don't worry, it's got a lot of roadblocks potentially in front of it. Having said that, on my accomplishment list, I want to now move over to another area here, which is going to be this storm drainage project. And I'll, I'll speak real fast, so I won't keep you too long. I look back at what I had done prior to the capital improvement program. I brought in a quarter of a million dollars to do the kiddie park. I created a little walking trail, although it needs repair. Created, the city would do capital improvement programs, which it never had done before I suggested redo them. I also created fiscal policies for the city, it had none when I started. And the thing I'm very proud of is I've created a cash reserve fund for this city that is really impressive for the size of the city we are. And we are now, compared to where it was when I was involved in 2012, which was a city that was, had seven out of the ten previous fiscal years expenditures that exceeded revenues. They're never supposed to exceed revenues and we had seven years of it. We are now, right at this point, the best fiscal position this city has been in, well, since I've been here, which isn't that long, but I mean, it's, I'm feeling very good about what I left you with. But now I have a story that's not as nice. I have a handout, if you would pass down a copy. This is a stormwater system inventory and evaluation of Nelson done by the stormwater people of Cherokee County. It's not a done report, it's only about eighty-five percent completed. They're supposed to have it finished out probably by July, but this is the early draft and it's an evaluation system of our system. It's also been documents, I mean, and I haven't given you the whole report, I just gave you a real easy read so that you could follow along with me. It evaluates the extent of our storm drain system. So, this little blue color map is, and there's little red spots on it, you see, those are all bad evil spots, bad things. So, if you go to the last page, follow along with me, we got condition of the pipes. Well, first one is pour, one hundred percent block with silt and debris outlet inlet. Next, pour, seventy-five percent silt outlet inlet. Pour, one hundred percent block, leaves inlet inlet. Pour, seventy-five percent block, sediment outlet inlet. Pour, seventy-five percent block, silt and brush outlet inlet. Pour, possible pipe separation. Pour, hundred percent block with debris and outlet. How are we doing so far here? How are we doing? Let's keep going. Pour, washing around pipe, underside tributary system, possible pipe separation, possible pipe separation, possible pipe separation. Pipe needs grouted, fifty percent block. I will not read through the whole list. If I blogged out about halfway through, council can see the list. Only Miranda would know how happy I am to see this list because I have been saying this story, we need to have our maintenance program do more than mow lawn. They need to, all of these drainage ditches need to be cleaned, in some cases, they're capital improvement projects, but I'm hoping that this list, which to me is awful, this is what you get if you do no maintenance to your drainage system. And in 2015, what happened? We had a flood. This is, this is a drainage system, but we're not maintaining it. That's our job, is to maintain the drainage system. That means there shouldn't be weeds that grow higher than four feet high growing in the drainage dishes, there shouldn't be hundred percent blockage, shouldn't be seventy-five percent blockage. So, when it comes time to do the budget, I'm hoping that you will allocate money, resources, staffing to maintain our existing infrastructure by the city. Because this report, in my vision, is very, very negligent and poor performance on the part of this city. And I thought it was very telling that I came right after your comments. I thought, "Did he ruin our speech?" And we're doing nothing. And how come we're not doing, there's no...
I'll tell you why we're not doing it.
Why, why not?
We did away with the fire department, used to the council and the volunteer, and the volunteer fireman went around every year and hose ever covered out in town.
And why, what did we do? So, the volunteer staff, so we're under the business, we're going to let it fill up and that's when you get a hundred percent seventy-five percent, you know?
Mine.
Do the same thing, fix it. Sorry.
So, this is a good point, so the fire department was to blow it out. So, with the fire department, Tim Fraker's here.
That's right. And they walked this...
Tim!
If they did that, we would have to reimburse the fire department for doing it.
Well, we may have to though, if it's a matter of...
That's right.
Well, we give them, we give them a building, I mean, we, we, it's, you get plenty. I mean, how many, how many outlets do we have? Like, I know you've got a whole lot of port water there, we have fifteen?
They only did the port water, they didn't do the goods. I'm not a list that they gave them. But they're not done yet either, that's the sad part.
How long you think it'd take to do it?
They used to do it a whole season, yeah, about three days.
So, I guess the real question is to get with him to ask what it would cost to have the county do that?
That's right.
Because we have...
I don't know if they can do it.
If that's something that they would be able to do.
Being county, you know, they'd be allowed to.
Tim, can you do it? Are you allowed to do it?
I am at loss. We do got away with a loss in the back in the old days, it was east of you now, I think, the city of Jasper, but with the way like buildings got now, it started dragging out and then, you know, I get a bird out there, if you blow some more stuff in the guy's yard somewhere, that's...
That's right.
A lot of liability with it, so generally we don't, you know, we used to fill up swin doors, we had to get away from that. You know, we get overwhelmed and like I said, the liability now, we just associated with that stuff. That would have to come above me, I believe. But as the fire chief, I'd have to stay, you know, my boss asked me, I'd say, "We'd have to stay away from it."
Who's your boss?
You know it.
The Jerry Cooper?
Very good.
I mean, it's something you gotta ask.
But it takes, you're blowing out a hose line and then you got a truck half empty and then he comes and says his house is on fire, that's what, that's what really throws us in liability.
Could they hook to the higher, the hydrants that are around town when they did that?
Again, think about it, if your house on fire, you've got that delay, that truck's not ready to roll, gets hooked up to the hydrant, it's downwater, then we're getting, you see what I'm saying, we take away from that readiness.
There's another, isn't there a company that does that? Because didn't we have them come and like blow out the pipe up there before they went and cameras down? That it was like some type of a, I don't even know what it was called.
Hydrant, there's a truck that comes down, you know, and checks, finds the water, you know, boy, you start digging.
But that, I wonder if they're capable of doing something like that?
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That was the exact comment that I was going to address. When I was down at Cracker Barrel and all that, there was a drain flush, pipe flush company was working right next to Cracker Barrel, they had all kind of logos on the truck and it was, and there are other services, I checked on this one time, all through the metro area, you can get services that will blow out pipes. And just, just to address the concerns about this will cost money, of course it will. And as, as I looked at the financial results of the last fiscal year, I think we had in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars of funds that we didn't even use. We could have blown out a lot of pipes.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's the infrastructure work that you do too.
Just saying, there are services available if we just work them into the budget, you'll get some estimates.
Yeah, I can go here to take a look and see what we can find and we'll have her ask Jerry, and then we'll, we'll take a look and see what we can find, but yeah, we do need to take a look at that. We were talking about last month as well, so.
Mr. Johnson, your turn.
Mr. Mayor, I got a leaky fire hydrant. Friday they came out and it's still leaking, how much did they have to replace the fire hydrant? It's dripping all down my flooded vine yard.
Is it terminal way off?
Yes.
Did it come out and check?
And they put a caution tape around it, it's still dripping.
Well, the water department came out as well, but still.
Yeah, I thought, I thought they went in the ground and there was a valve to shut it off, but it's still dripping.
They're not the water authority, I mean, we...
They have a water issue or fire?
Water authorities. Is that the city's?
Cherokee County.
Cherokee Water Authority.
Cherokee County. It's going to leak that to your water bill, so it's fine.
Did she say the water authorities already have looked at it? They already thought about it?
Anybody else got any?
The water authority does.
I'm like a lotion to a germ.
I'll say, I'll beg her, you know.